Good evening. It is January 26th. It is 6:30. We have a quorum in the council chambers. We also have Councilmember Jackson with us virtually, so we have a full dais. And the City of Bastrop reserves the right to reconvene, recess, or realign the regular session, or called executive session, or order of business any time prior to adjournment. It is 6:30, and I'm calling this meeting to order. The very first thing we're going to do, if you're in presence, if you would please stand with us, will be saying the pledge to both flags.
I pledge the business to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands arm in nation, under God, indivisible, and indivisible to all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, one state under God, one and indivisible.
You will please remain standing. We have Pastor Bob Long with us tonight that also serves as a chaplain, and he will be giving us our invocation this evening. Pastor Long?
Let us pray. Lord, I consider it a great honor to be here and pray for the Bastrop City Council. It's a wonderful thing to have been born and reared in this town, and I thank you for this council that oversees this city. I pray for the mayor, and the city manager, and the council, and all those that are here. Lord, we thank you for the wisdom that you can give them. So we pray for wisdom for them, knowledge, and discernment, and understanding, and the grace to do your will tonight as they make decisions for our city. Thank you for Bastrop, Texas. We thank you for our law enforcement community, our police department, and first responders. We pray for all those who work for the city. We thank you for the businesses in this community. May they prosper and grow. Lord, we pray for safety and health as we go through this pandemic. We just believe that you're going to bring health to Bastrop and guidance. Thank you for the guidance that we receive from our council, and I pray that you bless them tonight as they make their decisions in Jesus' name. Amen.
You may be seated. Thank you so much, Pastor Long. You'll note, you may be noting that on the agenda, it was Pastor Phil Woods, and Pastor Woods wasn't able to come, so we're especially thankful that Pastor Long was covering for him this evening. And we'll see Pastor Woods soon, and we wish him the very, very best. All right. Counsel, where we are moving on to Item 4A, which is the mayor's report. I have a couple of things before we go to the actual report, and that is, some of you know that I'm the TML Region 10 representative on TML's Board of Directors, and in Region 10, we got a new TML member, and it is the city of Ellinger. And so I reached out to Mayor Matt Mukalinka, I'm pretty sure I'm saying that correctly, and I'm going to call him Mayor Matt, and wished him the best of luck and welcomed him to TML, and he wrote back right away. So when you go through the city of Ellinger, some of you know where that is. That's between us and Columbus along 71. So it's kind of neat to have a new city, and TML is at 1,163 member cities, which is an all-time high since TML was created. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. I also want to share that I am participating in the Career Craft Mentoring Program that was sponsored by BEDC for BISD, and I am having a blast. I've already had my first session. If you didn't do that, I would encourage folks to sign up for that the next time. It started a 16-week session. There are some fabulous young people that are just wanting somebody to bounce some ideas off of, and I have made a friend for life and really enjoying participating in that program. And speaking of helping our community and people that do good things, I want to send a special shout-out to the library board. They took it upon themselves, and I'm the liaison to the library board, and I participated in this as well. They had such a special spot in their heart for how hard the library staff has worked through the pandemic last year and continuing to work now, and they did a staff appreciation luncheon for them on January 19th. So the board had that on their heart, they did it for the library staff, and I know the library staff is appreciative, and I'm appreciative that we have a board and a community that really goes the extra mile. So with that column, we can go to the first page. Just a few things that I got done between the 12th and the 21st, and the reason I'm going off of the 12th is because that was our last council meeting. In the upper left, you see Zach Levi, and we had our film Bastrop Take Two. The original film Bastrop was supposed to be in March of 2020, and it was going to be a kickoff for South by Southwest, which got canceled. So that was right in the middle of, we should not be getting together. So there is a fabulous commercial about why people should film in Bastrop, Texas, and for a lot of folks, that means Bastrop County. We in this room know that really means the city of Bastrop. So we are always thankful for the filming that takes place in our town. It's a really great economic driver and even helps with tourism later, because as the movies are successful, folks want to come see where the movie's been shot. So it was a fabulous event at Film Alley, and part of it was, it was just nice, we were all in masks, but it was nice to see people, just like it's nice to see you folks in the audience today. Then just below that, you'll see, this was on January 19th, the Rotary donated, the Bastrop Rotary donated money to the Nibbles Program, which is for the Bastrop County Emergency Food Pantry, and you can see that picture was taken in the Nibbles Building. The city also donates to that, and the Rotary President asked me if I would come be there and be a part of them getting money, and like, who's going to say no to that? So it was really great to see our nonprofits helping each other out. Then in the upper right-hand corner, this is myself and Dave Marsh and Dana Platt. On January 21st, we, the chamber had the ribbon cutting for the new KART station, and I'm thankful that Mayor Pro Tem Nelson got me the KART's logo mask, and it's not an accident that I'm dressed in red and black, and it was a neat event, and I was able to ride the e-cab there, and would just encourage everyone to please utilize those services so that we can continue to provide those. And then in the bottom right, also on January 19th, I was at the Bastrop Independent School District at their school board recognition, thanking their school board members, and our city manager said, "It looks a little Star Trekkie." I thought this was a great picture. That is Board Member Molly McClure that's on the iPad, and the way they do that is, instead of her seat, the iPad is sitting at her seat, and you can see Molly's face. And what was really cute about this was, as soon as they picked up the iPad, she said in a microphone to where everyone could hear, "Don't drop me, don't drop me." So it was really sweet. So, Counsel, I know that we all recognize as being elected officials, these folks are volunteering their time and making crucial decisions. BISD's boundaries and jurisdictions go well beyond the city limits, and we're just real thankful to the folks that choose to serve our community in that way. The next page shows some planned events. I did sneak into, on the 22nd, I got caught up at the office, and I wasn't able to do all of it, but I did show up in the last two minutes of BAMFAM, but I'm not going to say much more about that, because I know the city manager's going to cover it, and I did all of those other things. And then if you look at the next page, at the upcoming events, this Thursday, I have been asked by Senator Eckhart to participate in a policy panel that she's having, so I'll be doing that from 5:00 to 6:00. And then, Counsel, reminding you that we have a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission on Thursday, and that starts at 6:30. Looking forward to the library board meeting, which is Monday, which is already February, and it's just unbelievable to me. And that is everything on my mayor's report. Counselmember Peterson, it is lovely to see you. Let's, I would like you to go first this evening.
Yes, ma'am. Very happy to be back. I missed you guys, believe me. But I just want everyone to stay, take care of yourselves, and take care of each other. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselmember Peterson, Counselmember Rogers?
I don't have anything this evening.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Y'all wrote, Colin, a few weeks back, we had a presentation from Betty Voight, Executive Director of CAPCOG, and she identified one of her, one of CAPCOG's functions is running the Capital Area Emergency Communication District, and as a member of the CAPCOG Executive Committee, I also serve on that Board of Directors. And I'm pleased to report, Colin, if you can fill up that screen, we are now moving from our cake 911 system to one that is more able to fit the needs of our community, and they likened it to going from a dial-up internet connection to a broadband connection. What this means is that the PSCAPs, I want to make sure I get these terminologies correct, Public Safety Answering Points, receive the appropriate notice when somebody calls 911, so that the emergency services that are requested are sent from the nearest PSCAP. I know our fire department, our police department, our emergency management people, our emergency ambulance people work very, very hard, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work, but this is really going to enable us to be more responsive to people's needs in these emergencies, and I'm very pleased to be a part of it, although all I'm doing is reading the document. The fact that I got to vote on it really pleased me a lot. It means that nearly all the calls are guaranteed to reach the closest emergency center rather than taking a guess at it. So it should make it easier on our emergency responders, and I'm very pleased, I just wanted to update y'all on that. And Colin, if you'll go to the second slide on there. Interestingly enough, Bastrop's emergency center is being transitioned over today, or was transitioned over today, so the timing's very appropriate. So that's it.
Outstanding. Thank you for that update. Counselmember Ennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, I attended the city's Historic Landmark Commission meeting, and at which they approved three certificates of appropriateness for projects all over the city. And for those folks who do not understand what that's about, our Historic Landmark Commission is the group who works closely with our citizens to make sure that our architectural elements on all of our historic structures are kept up and meet the guidelines of the city, as well as helping with putting things together so they look like they have been there for a while. I want to draw attention particularly to one thing I'm very proud of the work they did, the roof of the Christian church. It took them about three or four meetings, but they worked closely with the church on that roofing, and you'd hardly even know it hasn't been there for quite a while. They do a great job, and they need some appreciation whenever you run across a member of that commission. And then the other thing I have to report is, we're going to finally vote on our Camp Cultural Arts Master Plan tonight, and I'm excited about that because I worked on that.
Yes, sir. That is Item 9C. So thank you for giving us that foreshadowing of good news to come. Counselmember Jackson?
Well, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to say, I think today is Counselmember Peterson's birthday, and I was just going to wish him a happy birthday in advance. If I'm not mistaken, it's his birthday today, according to what I got on Facebook. But I wanted to also thank the mayor and the city manager for their assistance as ex-official members of the Martin Luther King, the Bastrop County Martin Luther King Holiday Commission, in helping us with the walk. They were very, very helpful in that, and of course, Rebecca Gleason and Colin Guerra were very, very, very helpful in making sure that the online presence was taken care of and Bastrop was represented. As a lot of you know, we'll be hosting this event next year, and so that's exciting. I just wanted to say, thank you, thank you, thank you. We raised, we've raised not as much money as we have in the past for scholarships, because we're doing scholarships throughout the county to the six high schools, and so people can still go to BastropCountyMLKDay.com and make donations to help us to raise money for the scholarships, because we're a little bit lower than we have been in previous years due to the fact that we are doing this virtually. Wanted to report to y'all and let you know that I would seek your prayers and your good thoughts, because I have surgery in the morning. I'm going to have my nasal surgery, and it's an outpatient situation. I'm going to go in and spend an hour or so and then come home, but the recovery's going to be for a few days, so I may not see you at the joint meeting later this week. So just keep good thoughts for me, and I appreciate that, and that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselmember Jackson. Counselmember Peterson, I feel bad that we didn't recognize your birthday from the get-go. Mr. Peterson makes my heart happy all the time. City manager, we're at your report.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things to report on this evening, including a co-issue to Curtis Hancock and our Public Works Department for taking the initiative to repair, we have a memorial for the Columbia Space Shuttle mission in Bob Bryant Park that was in need of some tender, loving care, and with the help of Bastrop signs, you see the before and after picture there. I know we may not all get to Bob Bryant Park very often, and wanted to make sure we pointed that out to you. There's a marker there as well that needs a bit of touch-up, and we're working on that, and so wanted to make sure Counsel was aware of that. Thank you, Colin. And as usual, I'll go over what we are planning to bring to you at future council meetings, including in two weeks, we'll be meeting on February the 9th. And Counsel, I think you've seen all of these items before, except for two of them that I'll point out. That second bullet dot is about a lifesaving award that will recount the events here in town of a few weeks ago, where a local resident and members of our fire department saved somebody's life. And we're hoping we can schedule this for February 9th and have a celebration with the person who was saved and his family. That's subject to being scheduled, but I wanted to let you know we're working on that, and that'll be a special thing to celebrate. And the last bullet dot on that list is also pretty special. It's not lifesaving, but it's pretty cool. We have a, we have a couple of bond refunding plan opportunities in front of us that will save the city quite a bit of money over the next few years in annual debt service payments, and thank you to CFO Waldron for bringing that to our attention. And Counsel, we won't ask you to vote on anything. I think on February 9th, we're going to present to you a plan for moving forward. On February 23rd, will be time to have my evaluation. The agreement was that I would be evaluated in six months, so we're preparing for that. City Manager Evaluation, otherwise known as our annual opportunity for me to take credit for the good work of a whole lot of other people. We will also present our annual financial report and audit, and also new to the list, Trey will be bringing our Gills Branch Design Engineer Consultant for an update on where we are with the really important and significant Gills Branch project. And then we'll go into March and point out that, at one point, that fourth bullet point on the list, the contract for year three of the street maintenance project, we were going to bring that to you on February 23rd. Mr. Hancock let me know this afternoon that because of the bid opening schedule, we need just a little bit more time for that, and we have a few items that I don't have a schedule yet, but so you'll look for these items. Counselmember Rogers had asked and suggested that we provide an update on the status and the plan for the Highway 71 construction project, and we'll try to get somebody from TexDOT here who can adequately answer Counsel's questions about that. The River Loop Project is unfortunately a bit delayed, so we don't have a precise schedule for that. We are dealing with some TexDOT permitting issues there, and Tonya Cantrell and department directors and other staff have been working awfully hard for a couple of months now with a consultant on our comprehensive compensation and benefits study, but that's shaping up, and it is on schedule, and we think in April, we'll be able to bring that to the city council, which will be good timing for mid-year and next-year budget considerations. And as the mayor mentioned, I did want to offer a word of appreciation from the Bastrop Police Department and the staff to local son Bernard Blake here from Bastrop, who is a former defensive back who played for the Green Bay Packers. He and his BAMFam Foundation organized a first-down ride-along with Bastrop Police last Friday, which culminated in a visit with Bastrop High School athletes, where there was some inspirational advice provided by Mr. Blake to how these young athletes can make a difference in their communities. And the next slide is a video that showed that they had some fun as well. Pay attention to the very right of the screen. So they had, they had fun with the tug-of-war contest. We had several of our officers out there, including Chief Navy, who just went down, but he got back up on his feet. It was pretty impressive. So it looked like they had a good time. Thank you.
That is great stuff. All right, Counsel, we're moving on to the next page of our agenda. There are no works anything, so that brings us to staff and board reports. I'm on Item 6A, received presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the period ending December 31st, 2020. Ms. Waldron?
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. We had to do a quick switch of the clicker.
There you go. If you're following along at home, we're on page 13 of the packet. Ms. Waldron?
Not a lot to go over and highlight. We are not, don't have a lot of activity. I do have a few things to point out. On the revenue side, continue to talk about the hot funds, the cemetery fund, and there are a few other funds that are behind forecast, and it's mainly attributed to our interest that we are not receiving.
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
I can wait till she gets, she gets through.
Okay. I didn't, you gave your mic, I didn't know. I'm sorry. Keep going, Ms. Waldron.
On the expense side, we are all positive. Sales tax is very strong. Forecast to actual is almost 13%. Property tax is running a little behind our forecast, and it's usually just a timing issue with which month they decide to pay their taxes in, so I'm not too worried about that. General fund expenditure to department, we're about 95% actual to our estimated forecast. Water wastewater revenue is strong right now, almost 15% over forecast. The water wastewater department by division, they are almost 92% actual to forecast. Electric fund revenue is just slightly over forecast, but positive. The hotel occupancy tax revenue is, is behind. It's behind what we are forecasting, and our forecast is less than what we budgeted last year. So we tried to anticipate a slowdown on the hotel occupancy tax. Honestly, I was projecting that it might be a little bit higher at this point, so we are behind our forecast. I did look across the board at all the hotels, and they are pretty much all running behind where they were year-to-date last year. So, you know, the Hyatt is obviously a big piece of that, but they're all running less than they were last year. The occupancy tax expenditure revenue, it's only 80% actual over forecast. And our legal summary. Have any questions for me?
Mayor Pro Tem Nelson?
Maybe not for you. I'd like to direct this to the city manager. With the ongoing pandemic and the uncertainty of our hotels and our hot funds, I would like to suggest that we perhaps look at some contingency plans or options so that we can be, we can be apprised and be open and honest with our partners also. I'm not real sure what form that should take, percentage-wise, prorata, but I think we need to be prepared for the continuation of this until we reach some level of normalcy.
Yes, sir. We're happy to work with all of the entities involved and, with their help, come back to council with, as you say, a contingency plan. An element of that, I would suggest, be an assessment of the unappropriated reserves that are in the hotel motel fund, and the extent to which we would recommend that we use some reserves this fiscal year. So, yes, sir, we're happy to get with all of the entities involved and create some sort of strategy.
Counselmember Ennis?
I just wanted to thank you for the divisional reports. They're really helpful. Good, good job.
Thank you. I would like to add the comment on the hot funds that, Counsel, it might be a nice time to see where we stand on the convention center. Where are we? How long do we have left? What does that look like forecasting out in years? And I'm only taking this off of what the city manager, can we refinance? You know, is there any way that we can get the cost down on that loan? I mean, I'm just trying to think of any place that we can save dollars.
We could certainly look at it. And you're specifically talking about the debt service schedule for
Yes, sir.
the convention center. Yes, absolutely, we can.
I'm thinking that, I'm looking at the hot funds as its own bucket, and we need to look at everything coming in and everything coming out, and make sure we're making really good proactive decisions. And I, Counsel, it's something that we can certainly put on the agenda for a vote, but I'm hoping, city manager, that you bring us back something that gives you some flexibility, because the, this is ending December, we're already almost in February, and if we see things getting better, we don't need to make drastic cuts. If we see things suddenly getting worse, we, so I'm willing to give the city manager flexibility so that we are making really good financial decisions. So I would encourage you to make that part of your, part of your plan. Counsel, any other questions for Ms. Waldron? Good job. Thank you very much. All right, Counsel, we are moving on. We have a number of exciting presentations tonight, and our first one, we are on Item 6B, received quarterly report from BEDC, and I believe, there he is, there's Cameron, and if you are following along, we are on page 26 of the packet. Mr. Cox?
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for having me here this evening. I'm looking forward to when I can come back in and present to you guys live. Right now, with various things going on at home, that's not doable tonight as we had hoped. So, that being said, starting in May at these next ones, I'll be there live to see you guys. I'm looking forward to that. So we can go ahead, Colin, and go two slides down. Next one, please. So, city manager mentioned earlier, he's going to be having a lifesaver award, and I also have a lifesaver award myself, a couple of them, for 921 Main Street Project, and that's the team from Sabre, specifically Drew, Art, and Buzz, and then, of course, Jimmy Crouch, our project manager, who was my biggest lifesaver on this project throughout all the details. He has great knowledge of project management, and, which is something I do not have any knowledge of. And so he was able to provide very good background and expertise on issues, and helped us meet deadlines and keep this project just under budget, which will be in my next quarterly update, will be my numbers update on the final numbers after this month closes. But as you can see, we reached substantial completion December 3rd. AI started their release January 4th, and they're currently moving in, and once they get set up and they're ready to start classes, we're going to do a joint kickoff and grand opening with them at both the Lost Pines Art Center location and the 921 Main Street location, which, as we discussed last night, is really cool, because both of those are EDC projects. And now that AI is going to make those home downtown for our first higher education institute is really neat. Next slide, please. for our first Higher Education Institute is really neat. Next slide, please. Which brings me to our second location for higher education that's coming down the pipeline this year, and that's our Advancement Center, formerly known as, not the Artist Prints, but Project Gummy Bears. And this is now the 402 Technology Drive location. This is now going to be the Bastrop Advancement Center in the front and then Deep in the Heart Art Foundry expansion in the back. And there's some other analogies there. So we, Clint and Jamie and the Bastrop or Deep in the Heart Art Foundry closed on both their properties in November. And that was over $2.4 million in two properties that they purchased. And there's now three locations that they're finishing out and improving and spending additional money on that, well over $1 million. And part of that is our incentives to help the Water Street Millworks expand and move from downtown Historic Downtown to Industrial Boulevard at 292. And that's the first domino in the series of three dominos in this project, the second one being 402 Technology and the Bastrop Advancement Center. So the plans were submitted for approval this month and I expect we're going to get some comments back and work through that with with the city and and get that moving. Once we get Water Street Millworks moved into that location, we'll then be able to move the other pieces around to the other locations. Next slide, please. And ACC, again, like AI, it's all kind of up in the air right now with COVID on when those start dates are. But by the time I'm here in May with our with our next quarterly update, I would expect we have dates by then if we have not started by then. But that's to be determined and I'll keep you guys in the loop on that. And then we also are going to count on the community action of Central Texas being involved this summer and moving in and having some of their classes and certifications in that location as well. Next slide, please. Oh, okay. So this slide, we're just going to go ahead and table. All those deadlines changed two days ago. And even those may change again. But just briefly, the River Loop Trail Project is moving ahead and we're still waiting a final approval from from Tech Dot. And and that will then delay these dates here. Those dates are not good right now. So I'll have those dates for you in May and those will be the the hard and fast dates come May when I when I present to you guys. Next slide, please. COVID grants, we are not doing the fourth round. We're we've done a third round that you helped helped us with with your refund of $126,000 with CARES Act funding. Thank you so much for that. And that that concludes at this time what we're thinking from the BEDC, our grant program. And to date, that's roughly $576,000 to 121 businesses. And we're going to have final numbers on that as well at the next meeting. And Angela is currently, as we speak, compiling all those final numbers and and where we are statistically with those businesses right now. She's going to have those to the mayor tomorrow. So, next slide? Any questions? Before before I get to that, I believe that there wants to be a discussion on our on our Corex study. And Mayor, if you if you would like, I could I could provide an update on that as well.
Yes, sir. That'd be excellent.
Wonderful. Okay. So our Corex study was approved by our board on November 16th of this past year to examine and provide a feasibility study for the location on the Highway 71 corridor just west of Bastrop. Basically, where Cedar Creek High School, Hyatt Lost Pines, and Agilent Technologies are currently located. Corex Utilities has a discharge permit and a sewer treatment plant. That plan is maxed out to capacity. So they can't provide much by way of growth right now. That area used to be somewhat important for growth, but was not until the Tesla factory came in. Over the last year and a half, as being in the role as the CEO of the EDC, my project manager, Jean and I, have been receiving all these businesses that are coming to town from either within state or out of state or out of the country. And most of those are looking 10 to 15 minutes to a major highway, your large manufacturing facilities. And that location was generally I-35, all the way up until Tesla came in. When Tesla came in and announced, starting in August, that location now moved to Highway 130 or the Tesla location. And Corex Utilities, their CCN for sewer starts at 9.1 miles from that location. So that area is now what I call the bullseye for development in Bastrop County. And that's where the sewer can start for this area as well. And so why is that important for the city? Here's my favorite analogy of the night that I want to use for this is is a coral reef. Anybody that's been to to a beach, that's been to beaches without coral reefs and those with coral reefs, see the benefit that coral reefs offer. They break the waves and they stop the big waves from coming in. They provide fertile environment for 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 growth of all kinds of different organisms. But then, most importantly, they protect the island and protect the beaches and the beautiful sea and inland and reef creatures on the inside of the reef where the water is calm. That's what this is going to be on on the west side of Bastrop. This is going to be that reef. And this is going to be the area where the 100 and 400 and 500 and 1,000 acre tracts are looking to put in various manufacturing multifamily can go there. That's part of the study is to see where those can go and how. So that way, we provide that barrier there and and allow the growth to come in to Bastrop with that large multifamily, high-density manufacturing growth. We can start there and then work our way in and manage it in a more in a more beneficial process. And then and then everybody benefits in the long run because now we have employment centers down the road that's in the ETJ of the city of Bastrop. And additional hotels as well can take advantage of the sewer and provide additional hot funds for the city. So there's a number of trickle-down effects or, since it's sewer-related, trickle-up effects from doing this study and going forward then with a potential project. And that's that's where this is headed. So the study is through Corex. Corex is hiring, I believe, Kimley Horn as the engineering firm to do the study. And I met with Mr. Hoffman today and we both agreed that Kimley Horn's a good reputable firm, has a history with the city, has a history with Corex. So therefore, any overlaps in the study on how they could connect in the future to the city's capacity and city's wastewater, they then have that ability to communicate freely with Mr. Hoffman and his team and with Corex. And so we're going to meet on Tuesday with everybody. Mr. Hoffman, I would also invite you, Mayor. Forward that to you. I don't want to throw that on your plate right now publicly, but I plan on forwarding that to you. And I discussed that with with Mr. Hoffman this morning about attending that meeting next week. So that'll be Tuesday morning. So that way, we can have any engineering technical questions related to that study then. And it's at that time, we're going to we're going to define the scope of that study and where exactly on 71 it makes the most sense feasibility-wise to do the study and where where all the interests overlap. And I think that sums it up and as fast as I could do it. And at this time, I am free for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. That is a huge project and folks can appreciate how complicated CCNs and utilities and the overlaps of jurisdictions and protecting ratepayers and getting enough users for our our new wastewater treatment plant. It is definitely a complex subject and I appreciate that we're going to take some time and make sure we make good good decisions. So I thought that was a great summary. Counsel, any questions for Mr. Cox? Cameron, I can't tell. You're getting lots of nods, yes, yes, from counsel. So thank you. Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you. Thank you all.
All right. That is the end of six B, which means we're moving on to six C, receive quarterly report from Visit Bastrop. And it says Ms. Waldron, but I think we're going straight to Ms. Smith, aren't we? Yeah, Tracy says yes, yes, go.
Thanks.
Okay, we have five presentations tonight. He kept it under 10 minutes.
I got it, ma'am. We're on it.
All righty.
Okay.
Ready, go.
I first would like to introduce to tonight and thank our new Chair of the Board for Visit Bastrop, Tom Dickey, who's here in the room with us tonight. He was elected last week and we're very excited to have his knowledge. So just want to quickly go over some of the Q1 executive highlights. One of the ones that the mayor mentioned was the film Bastrop meeting that we had and also the Sugar Shack ribbon cutting we attended. The music-friendly advisory meetings are going along quite well. We had our chamber, I sit on the Board of the Chamber of Commerce and we had our board orientation and then numerous, numerous, numerous webinars. I'm getting a little Zoom fatigued. So what we're going to do now is we're going to start out by sharing our goals and outcomes for the first quarter. And then we will discuss and show you how we accomplish these goals. So for the first quarter, despite COVID, we booked eight pieces of business, which is is the equivalent of $1 million in economic impact. And I stand up here a lot and I talk about economic impact. And I wanted to just kind of bring it down to the local level tonight so you could feel the impact that these meetings and events really have, not just on hot funds, but also, of course, it all relates to sales tax, as we know. But lodging alone for this quarter was $313,000. Transportation, $74,000. Food and beverage, $185,000. Retail, $83,000. Recreation, $32,000. Space rental, $16,000. And business services are $125,000. So just kind of breaking that number down into how it really affects our economy by having us out there selling these meetings and events. We started something this year where we now have a little bit of history behind us. So we are able to come up with some marketing KPIs, also known as key performance indicators. And I just want to point out here that the website remains to be a critical piece for our marketing and the leisure newsletter. You'll notice that has a little blank next to it. That has just has not gone out yet this quarter, so that'll be going out shortly. But our metrics, I feel, are very conservative as we move into this, as we are in this year. KPIs for social media. Again, social media is a continued driver for our visitors. And the, we have also shifted our resources a bit towards meetings and events and groups. And so we've made some strong investments there. So we have completed the CyberConnect and Destination Texas virtual trade shows. Cherry Kay, our Director of Sales, is currently cultivating those leads. So the it's, we estimated the number of leads we would get from those shows, but we don't have any of the, they're still in cultivation process. And this is a part of our shift to support our hoteliers and the room nights. Traveler sentiments for leisure. This is, this actually came from a webinar that I attended and it was, I wrote his name down, where is it? Oh, Veneto Collaboratory webinar for TTIA on January 8th. And this was what was shared with us during that webinar. And I felt that this was actually the best, most comprehensive description of everything I hear every day, many hours a day. So pent up is the word. Where everyone's feeling it. And so for leisure, that's that. Meeting planners, it's a tale of two halves. We have the first half of the year, we have the second half of the year. And our meeting planners have some similar sentiments to our leisure travelers, but everything I'm hearing, I've been on a two-day conference webinar, everything I'm hearing is at 75% of the vaccine, when the general public is 75% of the public has been vaccinated, that we feel that things are just going, that pent-up energy is just going to let loose. So that's the predictions that I hear from various sources. You know, some is a little different than others, but for the most part, it's that. So what I'm going to do now is introduce, I know, Mr. Hoffman, you haven't met Ashton La Fuente. She's our marketing manager. And Ashton is going to come up here and talk about how we got all these great numbers and how we did all these great things.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Can I, Susan, can I ask? Can I ask you some questions about yours before Ashton shows up? I was hoping that maybe as the, your reports come, I was hoping to maybe get the stats, like your leads and things of what you did last year at this, what you did during that period compared to what you're doing this year. I see that you've met your goals and that's great, but you know, I would like kind of, like in Ashton's, she shows me what she did last year compared to what we're doing this year. Just because all the numbers look so big to us, I don't know how wonderful that is compared to, are we, how are we doing?
We are off a little bit, surprisingly, not as much, but yes, ma'am, I can absolutely do that for our next report.
Once we start bouncing back, we'll be able to see how well we bounce back. So I was just hoping.
Yes, you bet.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rodra, and thank you so much for speaking up. Please, anybody else? Ashton?
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, Council, City Managers, nice to meet you. I'm just going to jump right in. I have quite a few slides done and I promise to be brief. So if you guys have any questions, just feel free to interrupt me. What we're looking at right now is a six-month overview of our website traffic. I have highlighted the Q quarter, our first quarter, and read there for you guys. There has been some slight decrease year over year in our traffic due to COVID. It's not a large increase, so we're not concerned about it, but we do watch it. But I did want to call attention to December, which had a 25% increase over last year. And the next slide will kind of explain a little bit about why. Holiday content was a top driver for our website. We are outperforming the industry average on all of our our metrics that we monitor. And we're being a good referral partner to our member partners. Those referrals are up 17% over last year. And the River of Lights received a ton of, in 92% more sessions than it did last year. Variations of the Bastrop River of Lights keyword was a top driver for traffic to our website. The four bottom bullet points that are close together are just some other pages that performed really well on the website. I think that the River of Lights obviously was a no-brainer because it was a safe socially distant event. And so you can see how well it performed on the site. This right here just highlights how people are engaging with our landing pages. So the box on the left shows our top performing landing pages. How does our website perform against the industry average? So we compare against the industry. And then what cities in Texas are our users coming from? Consistently, Austin, Houston, and San Antonio, followed by Bastrop are our largest buckets. Paid search, we rank, I took a note here because we just had a competitive analysis. Our website claims the top spot on search engine results pages, which is key for delivering info to our users and potential guests. Since there isn't where anywhere higher to go other than the number one ranking, we just work really hard to make sure that 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 performance is strong. You can see what kind of drives the boat, events during Q1, because we had a lot of holiday events going on, accommodations and things to do. And so you can just kind of see how those things perform. Tour Texas is our main digital advertising placement for this fiscal year. The big thing to note is that it's just basically a gateway to our website. So anyone who's on the Tour Texas website looking for destinations to experience, we're lucky, we're a B, so we populate kind of high on the list on the first page. So the the total visitor guide request for Q1, 160 requests for information about Bastrop, lots of referrals to our website and social media pages. So we are happy with this performance. Our blog recap for the month or for the quarter. Obviously, a lot of our content was focused around the holidays. We analyzed keyword research to learn what is driving interest and we used that information to develop blogs so that we're developing, or so we're writing relevant content that folks are looking for. Micro weddings is a big search right now. As you know, you can't gather. So we put together a blog highlighting some of the ways that you could safely have a micro wedding right now. Those stats are in because they were live for one month. So that's page views and average time spent on page after one month. In December, we also found a lot of keyword research around things, you know, socially distant celebrations. So we put together a blog highlighting all the festive ways that you could socially gather during the holidays. And then we put together a gift-giving guide, which we tried to just highlight anyone and everyone who had something that people might want to take home and we threw it into a blog and put it up there. Those stats have not, or that, those have not, at the time we put the report together, those stats, the blog hadn't been live for quite a month yet. So we'll report those stats at our next meeting. Proactive PR, I think the simplest way to think about this is we work with travel writers who work, for example, Southern Living, and they're writing about certain topics. So if the topics they're writing about match some, you know, match Bastrop, we will pitch Bastrop as a story piece in exchange for a highlight in their article. So this is a highlight of who we have pitched Bastrop to. The actual publication is bolted there and then what they were writing about is. And then what they were writing about is next to that. And then some of the, so when we pitch to people, this is the coverage that's generated. There's a lot of pages here, so I'm just going to page through all of them. But what you'll see is there's links on each one of these. So if you guys wanted to go and see or read any of the articles, those are actually clickable links for you guys. And you can see the estimated coverage views, the industries that the coverage represents, and the publication that they were highlighted in. So some really good coverage around our holiday events in Q1. I'm going to try not to go too far. So this right here is our Texas State Travel Guide placement. We have shifted a lot of our focus from print placement to digital placement. As you guys know, things change in a day sometimes. And we need the ability to pause initiatives, switch things up. And we find that easier to do in the digital world. And so, but we can't deny that the Texas State Travel Guide, it's an annual publication. So its lifespan in the guide is a year. And it's a full-page ad next to a listing of Bash Drop. So it's really good visibility for us. That is distributed to about half a million people throughout the year. And as Susan mentioned earlier, we have shifted a lot of our marketing efforts from the leisure lane to support our hoteliers in the group and meeting industry. So one of the placements we had for Q1 was in the Association Leadership Magazine, which is the publication for TSAE. And we are representing Hyatt Regency Lost Pines and a group promo that they have running to help encourage people to book some meetings. We also have a bi-monthly newsletter that we send to both our leisure and our meeting planners. And, you know, it's really, really good performance here. We're exceeding the industry averages in both categories. And we just have a lot to talk about, so good performance on these. And that's all I have, if anybody has any questions.
Councilmember Unis?
Thank you, Mayor. On the website stats, is, what is, what do you attribute the low number from Dallas? Is it just proximity to Houston for Bash Drop, proximity to San Antonio, or?
I think so. I think our drive market, you know, Houston, San Antonio, Austin is kind of our sweet spot. And I think Dallas might be on the verge of just maybe a little bit too far. But, you know, they're consistently there. And every once in a while, they'll switch places with Bash Drop. But consistently, they're in our top five.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I really want to point out, I don't think you're giving yourself quite enough credit. On the leisure, the click-through on your Q1 newsletter report, your opening rate, which is instead of just hitting delete, which is what a lot of folks do, opening rate of 35.9 when the industry standard is 11%. That's not, that's more than triple. I mean, that is really, really impressive. So thank you for, it's helpful, as Councilmember Rogers was pointing out, it's helpful to have those facts. So thank you for putting those in. Mayor Pro Tim Nelson?
Have y'all looked in or been able to ascertain the advent of Tesla coming in having an impact on us as a visitor's destination?
Yeah, we are in frequent conversation with Cameron on EDC and what's happening in that world. But yes, we're seeing definitely a piqued interest in Bash Drop and where to live, as well as people that want to come here and check it out and then want to live here. So converting visitors to homeowners. But yes, we are. I don't have any statistics for you right now.
Understandable.
But yes, sir.
Well, I was looking at your festival's landing pages. 656% increase from previous year. And that's substantial. I don't know if that's from 5 to 17 or what, but it's, but it's, that's a neat number. Thank you.
You're welcome. As an economic driver, it's working, so.
Excellent. Council, any other questions for Ms. Smith? Great job. Thank you, Visit Bash Drop. Thank you very much. And thank you, Chair Dickey, for coming and joining us this evening. It's nice to see you, Tom. All right, Council, we're moving on to Item 6D. Receive quarterly report from Lost Pines Arts Center.
I know, I know.
That's a new face for Lost Pines Arts Center.
Well, I want to take a moment and just introduce the speaker tonight. There's been a little bit of change at the Art Center. I was asked about in November if I would help them a few weeks, a few hours, a few weeks, an hour, a few hours a week. And in the process of doing that, we discovered that Patricia's real expertise is programs, which isn't really a surprise because she's an artist. So that's where she really wants to focus. So I'm going to work with, this is Chloe Bravell. And she's been with the Art Center since 2017, started as a volunteer, is a paid staff. She's an administrator. So she's going to present the report for you now and in the future. So welcome, Chloe.
Welcome, Chloe.
Thank you. All right. So let's see if I, okay. All right. So the last quarter of 2020 really kept us busy. We reopened on September 1st and we were able to host several COVID-safe events. We also continued with our online shows and some of our classes, too, what we call experiences, like the glass-blowing 20-minute sessions and the Wine and Unwind, that I'll get to in a minute. And all of these classes and shows were just a way to keep our audience engaged, people who follow us on social media, all of that. But also, it's a way just for people to have a nice break from the stress and anxiety we've all been feeling. And that's really been our driving force through this pandemic, is just helping people get through it with art and creativity. So. So one of the things we did was our square show that's still up till the end of February. It's always highly anticipated. There's a lot of artists involved. It's very eclectic, very colorful. Many galleries do square shows, usually around the holidays. And now, with a lot of galleries unfortunately having to close, a lot of art festivals are having to close, this is just another opportunity that we could bring to artists, to still show and sell work. Then we move to Art After Dark. This is our first Saturday monthly event that we do. We've developed quite a following over the past few years. We usually have pre-COVID, usually 75 to 100 people who come from outside of Bash Drop as well, because it's a really fun event. Usually, we're featuring a new show, a featured artist. There's always live music. And so it's, it's just a, and it's also a way for people to meet and mingle with artists, which is a unique experience. So, and we'll continue the Art After Dark again after the weather warms up a little bit. We can go back outside and have a safer event. So then we move on to Wine and Unwind.
This is awesome.
Which is a really fun class. This one was a big hit we did in October. And we're, we feel very fortunate at the Art Center that we have such a large space in the back to do classes and events. And so as you can see in the photo, everybody had their own table, their own supplies. Teresa Dawson was our instructor, she's a local artist, and really just made it a fun, relaxing day. And so we're anxious to do that again, too. And then we have our virtual shows. Since the shutdown in April, we've, we had been doing online shows before, but since the shutdown and all up till now, we've been doing them more frequently. And we show them on our Facebook page and our YouTube channel. The shows are all theme-based. And as you can see here, we did Free as a Bird a few months ago. And that was in celebration of Bash Drop becoming a bird city destination. So that was a fun show to do. And then we did our handmade holiday market. This was the second year for this event with artists and craftmakers. We had glass-blowing demos all day long. And despite the very cold and damp weather we had that day, we ended up having a lot of people come through. We had plans in place to really control the crowd in case we needed to, but it was just a slow, steady stream of 20, 25 folks just all day long. We ended up with about 200 people who came. So we were really excited about that. And then the last slide is just our stats. We continue to grow on Facebook and Instagram, more and more followers. Our YouTube channel not only has the online shows, but workshops and live performances. And then our newsletter also continues to grow. We have a lot of people from around the world who follow us. We are really excited to see, and they're interested in what we do. So, and that is all I have for now. Thank you, any questions?
Thank you so much. Council, any questions? Councilmember Unis?
Great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, I really appreciate the variety of programming that you put in place here. It's impressive, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that picture of the outdoor Wine and Unwind, I mean, that's just worth a thousand more.
It was really fun.
You can be safe. And I believe that we are at a point in the pandemic that we need to be filling people's souls. And we got to do, we got to have conversations besides, are you running a fever?
That's right.
You know, just got to move on. Great job. Thank you very, very much. All right, Council, we're moving on to Item 6E. Receive quarterly report from Bash Drop Opera House. Hello, Ms. Holcomb, how are you tonight?
I'm doing well, thank you. Good evening. Okay, so in spite of everything, we've managed to stay very busy. I wanted to give you a little rundown on how we've done over the last few years and how COVID has hit us this last season, when we had to go dark, as so many other theaters and businesses did, and how we're trying to come back. If you look at the graph, you can see in 2016 and 17, we had 1,604 tickets sold for the season. At that time, we had put in a new board, new management. And so for 2017, 18, we were able to sell 4,150 tickets. 2018 and 19, we went up to 7,269 tickets. Last season, COVID hit and we did 3,600 tickets. So we haven't let that get us down. We have still announced a whole new season and are planning on continuing that. When COVID hit, our academy, which has usually about 50 children enrolled, they were about two weeks out from being able to perform their shows and we had to shut down. But we were still able to go ahead and open up our academy this last, they started in September. And in November, they were able to perform, that's their logo. And you can see here, we have two different classes. We have our younger children, who are nine to 19, excuse me, nine to 12. And they performed a show in October called Just Like Us. And it really focused on accepting people that are different than you, that don't look like you, that don't act like you, that don't think like you. And you can see, we had the blue people and the green people. And it was a real great experience for these kids because they were able to learn something besides just acting skills. Our teens, I didn't get pictures of them in here for some reason. That's our class that is 13- to 19-year-olds. They worked last semester on a show, an old-fashioned radio show called Dracula Radio Play. So they're learning what it was like to do radio plays back in the '30s and '40s. And that's carrying on, and they will actually perform that in early May. Elf the Musical was our big show in December. We opened up this season after being shut down for several months with a smaller show in September and in October. And then we went kind of boom with Elf. Now, we have only opened up at 50% capacity because we even went up to 75. We could not safely social distance our seats. So we've stayed at 50%. But what we did with Elf, whereas normally we would only have seven performances of a show, we did nine. And then we ended up, when we saw that we were selling out every show and people were calling, they were begging to get in, we did, we added two more matinees. In our last two weekends, we performed Saturday afternoons and Saturday evenings and Sunday afternoons, and it was exhausting. But we ended up selling as many tickets doing these 11 performances as we did the season before, when we just did seven performances. So that was great. And it was a terrific show with just a wonderful, a wonderful cast. We had 11 sold-out performances, 839 tickets were sold. 558 of those tickets were outside of the Bash Drop zip code. And we had 186 livestream tickets sold. Livestreaming is something that we started with the COVID, experimenting with, and it has gone terrific. I will tell you that we were able to reach people all over the United States with our live streaming, people that I didn't even know. We were picked up by three different online magazines that talked about us. And that was, that was really cool. I had somebody from California email to tell me how much that she and her children enjoyed watching our production from California. And they had, they had no relations in the show. And, oops, I'm sorry, just missed it all up. But that's it. Our next show opens on February the 19th. And then we have one in March, one in May, one in our. We are still planning the Texas Nonprofit Youth Conference, which was canceled last season in June. I'm on that board and we are still hot into conversations about, we are still planning on making that happen. It'll be over at the Performing Arts Center in June. And typically, there's 400 to 500 people that come. So we're working with the PAC and the ISD to see what that's going to look like and how to keep the kids safe, knowing that day by day, week by week, month by month, that scenario could change. And what that would look like. But hopefully, that's still going to go on. That's it, any questions?
Council, Councilmember Rogers?
Well, first, I want to congratulate you, I mean, first, thank you for your graphs. I love knowing how we did from one year to another. So thank you for, do you mean that? And even in your COVID, you're all, you know, you're like, I'm down. But look how far you are from when you took over. I mean, that's impressive. I mean, you went from 1,000 tickets to 7,000 tickets. You just need to be commended. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Great job.
Thank you, Councilmember Rogers. And I, Ms. Holcomb, I wanted to point out, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that part of why 18 and 19 was able to go up was because there was a discussion about you needed to have your funds in advance so that you could get the bigger shows with.
Exactly.
So that is the kind of thing, City Manager, we want to make sure that we take into account because we don't want to, what works for one organization may not work for another organization.
Right, right. We can't, we cannot announce our shows, we can't even hold auditions until we've already paid the rights for the shows. So all of those rights for any of the shows that we are looking at for that season have to be paid for well in advance.
So there's really going to have to be some cooperation with that because you can't even hold auditions and we can't get blood from a turnip, right? So there's, maybe instead of it being two shows, it's going to have to be one. So we're going to have to have some creative partnering in how we look at this. But I know specifically, if, and I think I'm correct, that part of why 18, 19 went so well is because you were able to make some commitments early on that allowed you to have additional shows.
Very true.
Okay. I just wanted to, that's kind of one of those little caveats that I want to make sure the City Manager is aware of. And then also to echo what Councilmember Rogers said, 3,600 tickets. And making people happy and people in California that don't have any relatives. And then I think of folks who had relatives, but because of COVID, weren't traveling. And to give them the opportunity to see their kids, that, and grandkids, that's just huge.
I tell you, looking at the faces of the people that are sitting in the audience, it's almost like they've been let out of prison.
Yes. Awesome, awesome.
They're so excited to be there.
I enjoyed it very, very, very much. Councilmember Jackson?
Right, I just wanted to say, I wanted to commend them for the streaming process. I've heard nothing but good things about that. I mean, a lot of theaters across the country and, you know, across the state are not able to do performances because of COVID. But the, our Bash Drop Opera House is out doing them all by doing the streaming as well as live performances. And so I commend you for that.
Thank you.
Great job, thank you very much. All right, Council, our last presentation tonight. And I'm going to say this publicly, City Manager, we should make sure we're always rotating them so they don't go in the same order. So the same person doesn't have to always go last. So if we could quarterly rotate, we mind, you know, we're going to hear from you guys. All right, we're on 6F. Receive quarterly report from Bash Drop Museum and Visitor Center. Ms. Sepikas?
Thank you. Council, Mayor, Mr. Hoffman. Okay, let's get going. 2021 Visitor Center First Quarter Highlights. Couple folks you might recognize in that picture. Lost Pines Christmas, which was really nice to have, honestly. So our first number, first quarter, as you can see by the numbers, are not even as good as 2017. I do have to mention, though, we did close down a little bit more. We got very nervous when the strains were coming. And then after Thanksgiving, the numbers were going up. So we went really to sticking to the weekends. So that I'm sure had an impact as well. Here's a graph, Drusilla, for you. Give us your graph, there you go. And so the numbers have been impacted. And I gave you the percentages for the differences between the years. And you can see them. And I gave you the percentages for the differences between the years and you can see them. It's very dismal. Um, community, but I feel good this is going to change. Uh, community, uh, event support, holiday stroll. We had a music trio. We also had a, um, a couple of guys out there. It was lots of fun. The Making Bastrop Bright, we participated as we did while I was in the bird walk. And the volunteer hours are down, um, for obvious reasons. The museum highlights, so this last quarter, October to December, we highlighted, uh, Bastrop County Architecture. It ended in December and our new, um, exhibit is about the Bastrop Christian Church, was the topic of our quarterly meeting in October, which was virtual and in-person. The numbers are low, um, but we still all had a really great time and learned a lot.
Ms. Sepikas, before you go on, I'd like to make the point that Councilmember Ennis made earlier. The picture on the right is the old roof. The picture on the left is the new roof. And you're hard pressed to notice that it's changed. And, um, hats off to HLC for working with that organization to make sure that that happened.
It doesn't stand out like I've changed.
It doesn't stand out, it looks like it's always, and now the new roof is, um, I, I think it's a, I shouldn't quote and say a number, but I'm, I know it's a longer lifespan. And it was certainly way past time to have that roof repaired. So hats off, Councilmember Ennis, and thank you for bringing that up as an example of the HLC.
Thank you. So we also started a rotating, rotating exhibit at the library. We actually started this when Becca was, uh, was here. And we started it prior to COVID and then, of course, everything shut down. So the first one was Bastrop Then and Now. We compared some of the buildings and the streets and that sort of thing. And, um, Carol and her team just put this up. And it will be up, I believe, for a few months. And this is on football in Bastrop. So I, uh, uh, City Manager, you might want to go look at that because football's kind of a big deal in Bastrop, as it might well be in Texas in general. So we didn't do our holiday home tour and we didn't do rendezvous. We had a remote rendezvous and we, uh, did a calendar, which was very well received. And rendezvous, remote rendezvous, we raised about $20,000. So I'm very pleased with that, even though we didn't have the event. The Research Library, which is our preservation of, uh, history for Bastrop, we had an increase, as you can see, of 20, 227 items. Uh, the first quarter, uh, numbers are there, people who reached out for some research help. We restored an old Victrola, which actually plays. We want to do some sort of musical, um, activity when we are all allowed to do that. We transcribed two additional oral histories, which I mentioned earlier is important because we can now search on those, which you couldn't do as, as just a video. And then the Uniquely Bastrop webinars are, are held monthly.
I think Ms. Holcomb's going to use that Victrola in her radio show. She, I can already see the gears turning, but.
And I got to thank Lisa because she, she, um, lets us use the Opera House when we try to do them in person for the Uniquely Bastrop. So it's a great partnership. Volunteer hours are not as good, but there are some volunteers coming back to the Research Library because there's less people, less connection, you know, there's more social distancing and less numbers. So that's good news and thank you.
Great job, Council. Any questions? Mayor Protem Nelson?
Ju- just an, an overarching comment. I really appreciate our community assets maintaining semblance of normalcy during this, this abnormal time. So thank y'all.
I want to make one last comment that the three of us, um, have committed this year to really partnering, um, in a very strong way. And we're not sure how that's going to look right now because of COVID. But I just want to say thank you to Patricia, who hopefully is watching, and Chloe, who's stepping up. And Lisa, of course, is just always wonderful Lisa, so thanks.
Great. And I want to thank the three of you in advance for working with both, I'm sure it will end up being Ms. Waldron and the City Manager to, to come back and, and, and bring a good plan to help us be able to support you guys. And that includes Visit Bastrop, but they left, so. Just, you know, like, because that's what we're looking for, is something that compare, that we can, how we can all work together. Councilmember Ennis?
I want to throw in another thank you for that. We've worked long and hard to get us all rowing in the same boat, in the same direction. And y'all are just exemplifying that concept. Thank you very much.
Can I say one last comment? And that is the three of us together are so strong for this, this city. I mean, if you look at our programming, the Opera House and the Art Center, and when we click it on all cylinders, it will be weekends for people to enjoy along with shopping and dining and the, and the outdoor activities that we have. So we're very excited. And the community asset, it's, we've been talking with Rebecca and Kathy Danielson, and it's going to be a great group, so.
Excellent. Yay, thank you all very, very much. Enjoy the rest of your evening. Council, we are at Citizen Comments. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for Citizen Comments?
No, Mayor.
All right, Council, we're on the Consent Agenda. We have two items for the Consent Agenda. Does anybody wish to have an item pulled? Madam Secretary, if you'll please read the Consent Agenda.
The Consent Agenda reads as follows. Item 8A, Consider Action to Approve City Council Minutes from the January 12, 2020 Regular Meeting. Item 8B, Consider Action to Approve Resolution Number R-2021-09 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas, Approving an Interlocal Agreement with Regent 7 Education Service Center, Allowing the City of Bastrop to Participate in the Tips Purchasing Cooperative, Attached as Exhibit A. Authorizing the City Manager to Execute All Necessary Documents, Proving for a Repeal Clause and Establishing for an Effective Date. This concludes the Consent Agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Nelson and a second from Councilmember Ennis. Is there any further discussion? Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. The motion passes unanimously. Both items are approved. Council, it is 7:46 and we are going to take a five-minute bio break. We will come back and start with Item 9A. We are in recess at 7:46. All right, it is 7:51, the promised five-minute break. We are back in session. We are on Item 9A. Consider Adopt on First and Final Reading, Ordinance Number 2029292020. 2020, god, believe, you heard me. As an emergency measure, ratifying temporary emergency orders enacted by the mayor in her capacity as the emergency manager in regards to the current local state of disaster for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, and safety. And the good news is there is no resolution to approve tonight because I haven't signed any additional orders. So that's why I wasn't overly worried about the number. Um, I did want to give you a quick update. We are still under the additional restrictions, um, that, that I talked about last time, which is a quick reminder is, um, hospitals have to stop elective surgeries. Businesses go to, from 75% to 50% and bars are closed. The great news is that on January 22nd, the, um, hospitalization rate was 14.12%. And on January 23rd, the hospitalization rate was 14.59%. So we have two days under the 15%. So if we were to get five more consecutive days, then that order will be rescinded. So as we had talked about before, that's something that's a, that's a moving target because if tomorrow it's above 15, then you have to start the numbers over. But the great news is that, um, when I, when we met two weeks ago, the number was getting in like the 17, 18 range and we have been steadily coming down. Um, as a result, and the way that you know for sure that this, that we're below the 15%, the available hospital beds is up to 691. The available ICU units is up to 63. And the available ventilators are 337. And Council, I know it makes our heart proud when we see all those numbers going up because we, that means that there are not folks having to utilize that, um, that health facility. So, uh, let me talk specifically about Bastrop County and, and give you some, there's some more good news here. Um, the confirmed, number of confirmed cases is 3,526, which is up 313 from last week. But the recoveries are at 4,087. And here's the good news. That is up 644 from last week. And the really good news is of the 313 confirmed cases that we've gone up, more than twice as many cases have recovered. So that, that's what we need, more vaccines and fewer cases. The number of active cases in Bastrop County is 574, which is down 77 from last week. So we're, we're seeing cases going down, which is why we should all, that's why you saw me put on my mask when I got up to go to the restroom. We just got to keep being careful and, um, get this behind us. I, uh, continue, I want to continue to report on the call center because that is staffed by volunteers. In the last week, they took 73 calls, which brought it to a total of 3,621 calls that they've done since the call center started. Um, and of the 73 calls that they got, there are a few of them. It is a hotline number that has been, been answering folks' questions since March. So they're getting a lot of vaccine questions and they're having to, um, give them the vaccine hotline. So let's talk about the vaccine. The state of Texas has now been allocated 3.9 million doses. They have received in shipments 2.87 million doses. And they have, um, documentation of 1.75 million being given in the arm. Now, and we had talked last time about the difference between the allocation and the ship. Um, we talked about it, it's kind of paperwork until the drug, um, drug pharmacy, the drug providers themselves, the Pfizer's and the Modernas of the world, actually ship the doses and there's a delivery slip and, and people know that it's coming. So that's some of the lag time is just physically moving the doses in the system. I told you guys last time that we're in Public Health Region Number 7. And I want to report to you that the, um, as of last night, uh, and it's important that I'm saying last night, that the number of people in the county that have received one dose is 2,415. And the number of people who have received two doses, full dose, fully vaccinated, is 264. That is a total of 2,679, which is 3.8% of that congregation that we talked about of the folks that are, um, in either 1A or 1B. The reason that it is really important to say that was what, um, was reported as of last night is because the biggest news that we have to report is that Dr. Wox's practice was designated as a hub in the state of Texas. And because of that, we were able to do a pod at, um, in Bastrop at, uh, Friday, January 22nd. And in that one day on Friday, they did 1,090 doses in that day. And, um, they got an additional 1,000 doses. And today, as we speak, I'm hoping they're done now and those, um, folks are, have been able to go home, they got another 1,000 doses which went into arms today. So, um, we're, we're going to talk about some of this stuff real quickly. Of the providers, there are 28 local providers in Bastrop County and eight pharmacies that have been approved to receive doses in Bastrop County. There are eight others that are still pending, but we have 28 local providers and eight pharmacies that have been provided. You will see, thank you Colin for pulling it up. The most important thing that anyone can do is go to covac.info and register online. I will, and there's also a phone number and you see it in the graphic that, um, Colin is sharing. So if someone doesn't have access to the internet, they can call. But I want you to know that the way that you are invited to the pods, and that's a, that's a point of distribution, the, the big pod clinics, you're going to get a notice from Eventbrite. Eventbrite. And the problem, you know, it, this is, people are doing a lot of miraculous things in a really short amount of time. But if you have your email set up to not accept, uh, uh, email from Eventbrite, you, you may miss your invitation. And if you don't accept the appointment, then they're going to be going on to the next person on the waiting list. So I really want to make sure, check your junk mail, check your spam mail. Make Eventbrite is what you're looking for. Because some folks may be expecting it to come from Bastrop County Emergency Management or something. The e- email is going to come from Eventbrite. Colin, if you'll go to the next slide, you will see that this, this talks, but this graphic is talking about the fact that whether you go to covac.info or you call, that is placing your name on a waitlist. It, um, some people have an expectation that they're going to fill out that email and get an email right back that says, your appointment is, that is not what is going to happen. If you call in, they are going to call you back. I will tell you guys that, um, last week on about Tuesday, they were at 23,000 people on the waiting list. The last number that I heard on Friday was 30,000 people on the waiting list. So one of the things that we're trying to do with the pods, you know, um, you don't even need a calculator. If there's 30,000 people and we're doing it 1,000 a day and it's essentially 1,000 a week because that was the total allocation for the week, it's going to take a while. One of the things that, um, and you would be doing the same thing if you were the person who was voting on the allocation committee. If we can show the demonstration of, we, the vaccines that were going in arms today were received yesterday. The more we demonstrate the ability to get those vaccines into arms, the better chance we have of getting a higher allocation as the state gets a higher allocation. I know folks are frustrated. I know there is a lot of strange things going on where, uh, one person in a family, that you, you signed up at the same time and one person gets an Eventbrite invitation and got scheduled and maybe got their shot on Friday or today and the other person didn't. They are doing the absolute best that they can. It is extremely important that they follow the vaccine guideline. There are ethics associated with this. You, it will not take you long to find that there have been some hubs that are not following the ethics policy and they get shut down. And there are consequences if we are not following the guidelines. And, um, Dr. Wox said it best when she said that it is all about, I wanted to make sure I wrote this down the right way, that it's not who you know, it is who you are. And you are an American, you are a Texan, and you are meeting the criteria for 1A. You are meeting the criteria for 1B. And we're trying to make it as fair as they, as they possibly can. There is an ethics guidance at the state level. There is an ethics guidance within Bastrop County that's making sure that we are, um, doing this in as a fair, in as fair and equitable way as we possibly can. As you can imagine, putting 1,000 shots and, and big kudos and thank you to Dr. Wox and also to Walgreens, who is the people that are actually putting the shots in arms. So there, it's, and to, um, security that's being provided by the ISDs and by the cities to make sure that folks know where to park and where to go and that we have crowd control. Everything is by appointment. Even if it is the end of the night and they've had some no-shows, they are, if they are reaching out to you, it is an appointment. So there's, there's, um, and I have heard that it is phenomenally flawless. They've really done a good job of getting people through the, um, system. So I'm very thankful for that. Colin, if you'll go to the next slide, you can imagine that it doesn't just automatically happen. So there are volunteer opportunities. If you are able to volunteer, I didn't put the slide in for the medical volunteers because I didn't know how many medical folks are following us, um, at Council. But this volunteer opportunity to support the vaccine efforts, um, I wanted to share that. And I know, um, Assistant City Manager Gleason will make sure that that graphic gets out. If folks are home and frustrated and they have time and they have the ability to help, I want to encourage folks to volunteer and be a part of what Bastrop County cares. Um, there's a lot of folks working together to make sure that these pods happen. So Council, we are not, um, as I said, I'm not changing anything. So there's nothing for you to vote on and approve tonight. Um, but I want to encourage everyone to keep, um, acting in a safe manner so we can get those cases down and to be patient and let's get those vaccines up. Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yeah, a couple of questions or a couple of, yeah, questions for clarity. One is that in order to be a vaccine center, uh, a individual doctor's office needs to sign up to be a giver of vaccine. Am I correct?
Yes, sir. And not only are you going through DSHS, um, to become a, an approved provider, there were a whole bunch of more hoops to jump through to be, um, designated as a hub.
So that's why that every medical facility is not a vaccine center.
That is correct. And, and although it is Dr. Wox's practice that has been approved as a hub, um, that hub is a centralized building and it is likely that there will not be another hub approved in Bastrop County. And they're trying to make sure that they have hubs in each of the counties. Some of them, um, it, like in Austin, I believe there's more than one hub. But yes, there, thank you very much for that question.
And, and secondly, there's an assumption that all pharmacies have, have signed on to be vaccine centers. But my understanding is, is the CVS at a corporate level- to be vaccine centers, but my understanding is, is the CVS at a corporate level has decided not to do such?
I, I'm not sure if they've decided not to or if they're still working on their approvals, but we haven't seen them on the list. And there is an interactive, available to the public DSHS is Department of State Health Services, very cool interactive map that you can zoom in and it has a dot and shows you who is an approved provider.
Yeah, just trying to streamline that information so that, that people aren't under the wrong assumptions.
I just don't, I don't wanna imply that CVS is never gonna be on the list.
I understand, I understand. Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. You may have touched on it some, but I'd like to get it out there where people, some people think if you get the one A and the one B, you can put a big S on your chest. And that's, that's not the case, you still need the mask up.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. That is exactly right. Thank you for that. Council, any, thank you for great questions and clarifications. Is there any other questions? With that, we are done with nine A. Moving to nine B, consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-08 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving the Bastrop Police Department to apply for a grant from the Edwin Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program. Body worn cameras at a total cost of seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars with no matching funds from the City of Bastrop. Authorizing the Chief of Police is the grantee's authorized official providing for a severability clause and establishing an effective date. Chief Nagy?
Good evening. Colin, we have a slides. Well, I'll go ahead and start moving forward. Perfect, thank you. All right, so tonight I'm bringing forward a resolution to apply for twenty-eight body worn cameras. As you all know, we have body worn cameras currently, but those are starting to kind of meet their life expectancy. We're starting to have to replace those every once in a while. So this will be for all the officers plus our animal control, then one spare. That will include a three-year no-fault warranty. That will include three-year licensing, all the hardware and software, and then also a system that will help our videos integrate with our current reports management system. And it's just a little over seventy-two thousand dollars with no matching funds from the city. And do you have any questions?
I move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Rogers and a second from Councilmember Peterson. And Chief Nagy, I would encourage you to find more and more grants just like that one.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Chief.
Good ad track, Chief.
Excellent. All right, council, we're moving on to item nine C. I believe Councilmember Ennis has a special interest in this. Consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-11 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas regarding the implementation of the Cultural Arts Master Plan, creating Cultural Arts Commission, decommissioning the Bastrop Art and Public Places Board and creating priorities for the Cultural Arts Commission attached as Exhibit A, providing for a severability and repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Gera.
Good evening, Mayor, council and city manager. Thank you. Yes, the Cultural Arts Master Plan, and these are the implementation recommendations. A long time coming, couple of quick dates for you. The earliest date I could find dimension of the Cultural Arts Master Plan, January 2018, that's when the RFP came out. And then in September of 2019, you all accepted the Cultural Arts Master Plan. There's a picture of the cover of the plan. And then in February of 2020, the Cultural Arts Master Plan Implementation Ad Hoc Working Group was established, again by you all. And the members, I'm gonna read the members' names, they worked really hard through a series of five sort of workshop-style gatherings. We had Mr. Dick Smith representing BIIPP, Ms. Lisa Holcomb representing the Opera House, Mr. Luis, Luis Chico Portillo, the Fine Arts Director of BISD, Ms. Maria Montoya Staten, she's with art in general and the, the art league, Ms. Debbie Moore, Ms. K. Sepikas, Mr. Phil Hurley, who is a musician and with the Music Friendly Community Advisory Committee, newly formed committee. And then also active in this was our city manager, Mr. Paul Hoffman. He led some of the exercises and was really helpful there. And then, of course, our council member liaison to BIIPP and this process was Councilmember Bill Ennis. And we all had a lot of fun working on this together. So moving on to our, oh, there's a picture of us all putting our ideas together. Moving on to the actual action items that this group came to consensus on, we've got a couple of documents before you. One is the resolution itself, which has some action items on it. And then there's an Exhibit A, which I'm sure you've seen. And that Exhibit A represents, in my own words, and this was said throughout the process of creating the Cultural Arts Master Plan, this document combines national best practices, trends in this industry, trends in the, in the cultural arts world at large. And there was always this idea that the plan would have to be custom fit to the City of Bastrop. And perhaps no consultant from beyond our walls would be able to do that. And, and really, I saw this group as doing that custom tailoring job of, of taking this large document and saying, "What applies to us, what may not apply to us, what are our next steps here as a city?" And so in, in going through that process, the, the themes, values and priorities document is, is, it was really awesome to watch. As you can probably imagine, this topic can, can, can be ten thousand feet in the air and then ten feet off the ground and it's just broad. And, and are we on the same page, are we not on the same page? But I will compliment, City Manager Hoffman brought an exercise to the group that kind of took all that scattershot of information onto a chalkboard and then distilled it down and distilled it down again. And, and what you see there are the themes, values and priorities. And I think that represents Bastrop's cultural center's heart, where we are, what we are as a community. I think that those are just the headings, there's a lot of words behind each of those. But it's a pretty powerful document that, that, that came out of a series of five meetings. So that document, we're calling the, the charge to the, to the, to the, the new group that we're proposing be created. And so then these are the three action items that you see in the resolution. The first, I'll just summarize, being the creation of a Cultural Arts Commission. Again, in my own words, this is a group that many people would, from the outside, maybe say, "That looks like Bastrop Art in Public Places." And in a way, it's, it's, it's a counterpart, it's, it's broader, it's a broader umbrella. Bastrop Art in Public Places, many cities have a Art in Public Places entity. And it, it has limited jurisdiction, if you will. It's art that literally lives in public spaces. We've got our, our sculptures up and down Chestnut Street and through the park and by the library. But that group, maybe in an ad hoc way, if you will, thought about broader cultural pieces, but really didn't have the jurisdiction or authority to, to coordinate the Opera House with the museum and, and see a bigger picture. Art in Public Place is a fairly narrow slice. And so this empowers a group, Cultural Arts Commission, that's referred to throughout the Cultural Arts Master Plan itself, empowers a larger group. So it's a, it's a major step in this process. Number two there is, is just adopting that Themes, Values and Priorities document that you have in front of you. It's, it's the idea that you, as the council, would, would accept that document and, and, and give it your blessing so that the commission would go forward with that as a roadmap. And then the third is just the official decommissioning of Bastrop Art in Public Places as a city board. In a sense, this commission that we're proposing replaces it. And it's always been the spirit, it's always been the understanding that a, a Art in Public Places entity needs to exist, but can exist as a subcommittee of a Cultural Arts Commission. So those are the three big action items that are in front of you and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Ennis?
I'd like to add one statement and say, when the mayor asked me to work on this project, I was like, "Oh, Lord, where do we start?" Had it not been for the young man that stands in front of you and our city manager and the wonderful seven people that contributed their time on this, we wouldn't be here tonight. And it makes you really proud for Bastrop that we have this kind of leadership involved in this effort. And I'm so looking forward to this commission, if we approve it tonight, moving forward and implementing the, the, all the items in the report and moving on down the road.
Excellent. And I want to thank you for agreeing to take on the task and doing just an excellent job as you always do in making sure that it was inclusive for the community and it can really be a foundation for, for the community to build on. Just really appreciate the extra work that you did. Council, any other comments?
I'd like to move to approve.
I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Ennis and a second from Councilmember Rogers. One comment that I would like to make, council, if it's okay, and, and I, it doesn't have, really have something to do specific with the motion, but I see in the recommendations of the document that you guys prepared, that one of the next steps that would happen would be the generation of bylaws, which I think is excellent and needs to be done. But city manager, I would like you and your team to perhaps, and I'm not saying it has to be done by the next time, but as we move forward, it might be a good time to review bylaws of our different boards and make sure that we've got some consistency and really take another look at what boards do we have that are legislative and statute in nature and what boards do we, and make sure that we're real clear on missions and if people need bylaws, they have them and if they don't need them, that we revise them. But kind of a, and that may, I am perfectly prepared, city manager, for you to say, "Well, that's a really big project we haven't talked about and we want some time." But I think that should be the, the result of this great work, Councilmember Ennis, just makes me know that we may have some cleanup to do on some other boards.
I think that's a great idea, maybe a goal to have it done before we assign new board members coming in October, maybe have that as a goal. You know, that's, we've got some several months before that, but that way maybe going into a new board, it'd be a great time to clear it all up.
And city manager, I'm perfectly happy if there's some steps along that. You know, like this, this, this first pass, we think this, second pass, so I'm, I'm not, I just think it'd be a good idea to look at them. And thank you, Councilmember Rogers, for bringing up that we normally make those appointments in September for an October first start. Council, with your permission, I would really like to perhaps go ahead and, and name the first board members for, for the camp, for the commission so that we could go forward. Councilmember Ennis, if you think time-wise, I, I would like to move forward with that if you think it can be done before September.
Oh, sure. I, I think we need to, we don't wanna lose any impetus.
Yeah, I don't wanna lose the momentum. Excellent, excellent. All right, well, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Definitely, yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council, the motion passes unanimously. And council, I think we should have a round of applause for Councilmember Ennis and the entire team. Thank you, Colin, and thank you, everyone who served. Just a great job. We are blessed to be in Bastrop. Council, we're moving on to item nine D, consider and adopt on first reading ordinance number 2021-01 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas abandoning and vacating zero point one three nine acre portion of Church Street roadway being all of that certain zero point three five one acre tract of land situated in the Bastrop Town Track Survey, abstract 11, Bastrop County, Texas being more particularly described as being a portion of the Church Street right-of-way. The City of Bastrop said zero point three five one acres tract of land being more particularly described by meets and bounds and plat attached heretofore as Exhibit A. Holy cow. Which is attached heretofore and incorporated herein for all purposes, authorizing the city manager to execute a deed to convey said right-of-way to adjacent owners and providing for findings of fact, repealer and severability, establishing an effective date, proper notice and meeting, and move to include on the February ninth, 2021, city council consent agenda, which means that, Madam Secretary, you'll get to read this next time, for a second reading. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor, excellent job, by the way.
Thank you.
Yeah, pretty long. So we said all that just to say, if you look up on the screen, what you see outlined in yellow is actually the point three five one acres of Church Street that the city will abandon, right? Issue a deed to the church and we will swap for that red rectangle, which is known as Alley A, right? And that's the point one three nine acres, right? So we will execute a deed for both. I noticed a couple typos in what we have in the packet, but we'll fix that and bring it back around, get everything executed, make sure there's easements in place for the drainage and, and electric infrastructure that's currently in the Church Street right-of-way you're about to abandon pretty soon. So, and other than that, I'll take any questions. It's just.
Thank you, Mr. Jobe. I did, I did know there was drainage there, so I wanted to make sure. And will we have, I know you guys will already be thinking about this, you have access, cause the drainage easement may only be ten feet and you may need wider than that to actually clean out the drain or whatever. So I know you'll make sure that you've got what you need to take care of the infrastructure.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, it's, it's, we've already got it surveyed out and the exhibit's ready to go.
Excellent, excellent. Council, any questions for Mr. Jobe?
Move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. From Councilmember Peterson and a second from Mayor Protem Nelson. Are there any further comments or discussion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment.
Absolutely. Councilmember Ennis?
For those of the community that know me, I have been a member of this church for, since I moved to Bastrop, but am no longer a member, have not been for about a year, so I will plan to vote on this item.
Excellent. Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Ennis. I appreciate that, cause I know when it was discussed before, there was a different situation. Thank you for that. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Jobe. All right, we're going on to item nine D, consider action to approve resolution number R-2021-10 of the City Council of the City of Bastrop, Texas approving a cost-share agreement between the City of Bastrop and West Bastrop Village Municipal Utility District, approving an estimated amount to be one million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and forty cents to increase a twelve-inch wastewater trunk main to a twenty-four-inch wastewater trunk main attached in Exhibit A, authorizing the city manager to execute necessary documents, providing for a repealing clause and establishing an effective date. Mr. Jobe?
Thank you, Mayor and council. Just what you read, almost everything is in the, in the hearing, but I think a picture in the, in the caption there, but I think a picture's worth the words. If you'll look here, and if we did execute wholesale wastewater agreement with West Bastrop Village, they will install a line across what was known previously as East Bastrop Village, and they will tie into a main here at Hunter's Crossing. And what, and part of our west side collection system is to bring a twenty-four-inch main directly to that point. So what we're gonna do now, this gives us an opportunity to share the cost of something that probably would have been extended later and do it at a much cheaper rate. And what we were paying for here is the only, the size difference, if that makes any sense, of the pipe. So if they need twelve inches, which is what they needed, we asked for twenty-four, we were only paying for that difference in percentage of pipe capacity. Everything else that's related to construction, the developer is picking up. And then we have a true-up clause in this agreement, so if it's less than that, we get our money back. So with that, I'll take any more questions.
Thank you, Mr. Jobe. It's, we talked, when Mr. Cox did his update earlier, we talked about gravity and coming to the wastewater treatment plant. This is a way that we're able to get folks that gravity to our wastewater treatment plant. We can't treat it if we can't get it.
That's correct. And by, by now going, by participating now, we'll get this for a much lower price. And it just so happens that all of the properties to the north of this line can gravity to that line. So we thought it was a good idea to go ahead and participate now. I mean, that's the recommendation that we're making for approval.
It is certainly, the, council, if you choose to approve this, it is a way that we are maximizing our tax dollars and giving our existing citizens the very best that we possibly can, spending their tax dollars wisely.
That's right. And this is all recovered through our impact fees.
Yes, through the right players, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Jobe?
Move for approve.
Second. I have a motion to approve from Councilmember Jackson and a second from Councilmember Rogers. Madam Secretary, if you'll call the roll.
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Rogers?
Yes.
Councilmember Ennis?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes.
Thank you, council, it passes unanimously. I'm really glad, Madam Secretary, you're gonna get a chance to read it next time we meet. All right, council, we are on our page four, the last page of our agenda. We We are going to go into executive session on the following item, 10A. City council shall convene into closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Codes 551.071 and 551.072 to seek the advice of legal counsel and to deliberate upon the acquisition of real property interests associated with the construction of wastewater treatment plant number three at 385 South Highway 304, Unit B, Bastrop, Texas 78602, and its collection systems, including all related agreements, authorizations, easements, resolutions and associated legal actions. It is 8:24 and we are in executive session. Okay, Colin, let me, all of, all right, it is 8:35 and we are out of executive session. Council, we will not be taking any necessary or appropriate actions on item number 11, which gets us to item number 12. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, a second from Councilmember Rogers. And Mr. Peterson, have a wonderful birthday. It is 8:36 and we are adjourned.